of chosen commissioners, whatever we call ourselves, May 24th, 2022. I have a roll call, please.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Best Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Here.
Director James.
Here. So can I have an invocation? Then we're going to do a pledge of allegiance. And after the pledge of allegiance, can I ask if I already remain standing? We're going to do a moment of silence for all those who served in our armed forces who were killed in action, as well as those who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,136 residents of Passaic County. And I also want to mention the 10 folks who were shot to death by a racist in upstate New York. And, you know, we really have to remember that those 10 people represent Americans and they should have never been the subject of anybody's wrath over racial, you know, issues. It's just, it's un-American. We have to really sympathize with those families who now have to bury 10 of their relatives. So let's not forget them. I'm never going to remember the name of the shooter because he doesn't deserve to have his name remembered. But every one of those people who were killed deserves to be honored and remembered. They got killed just for going food shopping and because they were the color that he didn't like. So remember that, please, when we have the moment of silence. Can we have an announcement of the open public meetings law, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, location included the annual notice and adopted the reorganization meeting and filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Can everybody stand for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance, please?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in the county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Terry, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to go a little bit out of order. I'm going to turn over the agenda to our county administrator, Anthony Genova, who will take it from there.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everyone. On my agenda this evening is our annual Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebration. And I, we are honored and pleased to have Commissioner Bartlett, who has put this together. I know he's worked very hard to put the ceremony together. So I'll turn it over to Commissioner Bartlett to proceed.
Thank you very much. As we said, it's a campaign where we do not have any information on children. We haven't been together for more than two years. Remarks and then recognize our honorees. These last few years where we haven't been together have nevertheless been transformational ones for the Asian American and Pacific Islander communities in particular, here in Passaic County, in New Jersey and across the nation. First, we know a lot more about these communities than we did a couple of years ago, thanks to their vigorous participation in Census 2020. And I want to recognize Dr. Kyati Joshi, who's here with us, who was one of our county co-chairs. And I know that, I thought, I know that Commissioner-elect, excuse me, Councilman-elect Fariduddin, who also worked on the census effort, is trying to join us here this evening as well. We know now that Asian Americans are the fastest growing racial group in the United States in the 21st century, and that as of Census 2020, there are more than 1 million Asian American New Jerseians. One in 10 New Jerseians, in fact, can trace their lineage to Asia and the Pacific Islands, Pacific Islands, including hundreds of thousands of biracial and multiracial Asian American New Jerseans. Indian Americans are the largest APA ethnic group in New Jersey with 384,000, but three other groups, Chinese, Filipino, and Korean Americans, all number more than 100,000 in New Jersey alone as of Census 2020. Most immigrants in New Jersey come from Asian nations, the largest number being from India and China. And of course, the census data show high levels of educational entertainment, high family and household incomes. At the same time, the, you know, and as these communities continue to grow, Asian American Pacific Islander Americans are more and more part of our day-to-day life. Thirty-one percent of small businesses and 47% of Main Street businesses are owned by immigrants, many of these in New Jersey being immigrants from the Asia-Pacific region. But lest we think it's all good news, we need to remember the challenges and the struggles that continue. Asians are also the largest group of refugees and asylees in the United States, and more than 1.5 million undocumented U.S. residents are Asian. The last two years have also been a time of escalating violence against Asian and Pacific Islander Americans. There's the stories we know from the news, of course, the killing of Asian American women in Georgia and Texas. But according to the organization StopAAPIHate.org, from March 2020 to December 2021, there were more than 10,000, almost 11,000 hate incidents against Asian American and Pacific Islander persons. Of those hate incidents, more than 4,000, almost 5,000 were in 2020, but more than 6,000 were in 2021, which means we're still dealing with an escalating problem and challenge targeting the Asian and Pacific Islander communities in our nation. A third of the reported incidents are acts of violence or physical avoidance. More than one in 10 are civil rights violations, including denials of service and workplace discrimination. And many of the assaults are against elders. The largest number of people assaulted in anti-Asian hate crimes are people over 60 years old. In a national Asian Pacific American Women's Forum poll, a majority of Asian American women had experienced anti-AAPI hate in the form of violence, verbal assaults, discrimination in commerce and the workplace. Of course, we can lay a lot of the responsibility for that at the feet of political and media figures and online voices that labeled COVID-19 the China virus or the Asia flu, and those who demagogued the white replacement theory that envisions immigrants of color to be an existential threat to some imagined American way of life. On the contrary, as Professor Joshi reminded us when she spoke here a couple of years ago, the Asian American story is not just an immigrant story. It goes back to the colonial era, and Asian and Pacific Islander Americans have been part of our economy and our society for hundreds of years. So as we celebrate these communities, without being starry-eyed, we should see this month not just as a moment to recognize the extraordinary individuals and groups that we're going to meet here tonight, but also as a time to recommit ourselves to being the kind of welcoming, just and equitable place that everyone here knows that we can be. With that, I want to ask my colleagues, County Commissioner Duffy and County Commissioner Lapore, to join us and deliver our first proclamation to the good people of Channel Barra and Anam, one should come up, and anyone else who's here with the group, Amber and others, join us here at the podium as well.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. It's an honor and privilege to be able to read this in the Board of County Commissioners. Come on, do what you talk, get up here. All right.
I'm marked.
Yeah, you are. I'm the markman.
See that target in the back?
All right. Ready? Guys, whereas the month of May has been designated as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and the Pacific Islands and their descendants. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic seems fitting and appropriate. Hey, hurry up. We're waiting for you. Whereas Channel 52 is a community television channel based in Patterson, New Jersey, founded in 2016 and led by CEO Anam Chowri, with directors Amber Hoag and Hussein Pathan. Am I correcting that right?
Yes.
And Director of Operations and Programs Barah Hossain. And whereas the name Channel 52 has its roots in the Bengali language movement, a movement of pride in the Bengali language, which began in 1952, when the current People's Republic of Bangladesh was part of the dominion of Pakistan, and the movement helped lead to Bangladesh's independence in 1971. And the United Nations recognition of February 21 as World, quote, "World Mother Language Day" to promote linguistic, maybe I could use that, linguistic and cultural diversity. Whereas Channel 52 broadcasts worldwide from its studios in Patterson via the internet, set-top boxes, and an Android app. And whereas Channel 52 provides a programming for people of all walks of life and all ages with a focus on education, creating cultural bridges between the Bangladesh community and other cultures in Passaic County and beyond. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, 52 helped to inform the community in English and Bengali, not only about testing, vaccination, and how to control the spread of the coronavirus, but also on housing assistance and relief programs, mental health, child development, and other concerns brought on by the pandemic. And whereas in 2020, Channel 52 partnered with Passaic County's Complete Count Committee and the U.S. Census Bureau to provide an hour-long Census 2020 telethon that was broadcast and webcast across our region. At the same time, Census Bureau provided 11 Bengali-speaking operators ready to take resident census responses by phone in Bengali. The only time residents anywhere in the United States who could complete their census by phone in Bengali language. And whereas with its sister organization, quote, "Event USA Entertainment," end quote, Channel 52 has organized cultural shows across the United States who celebrate Bengali's national days, share the Bengali culture, and engage in Bengali-American children with their culture and heritage. Whereas Channel 52 has become a leading voice on sensitive issues like domestic violence and for seven years has sponsored the International Women's Day Award Ceremony in Patterson, known as the Purple Festival, to celebrate the outstanding contributions of women from many communities and backgrounds. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of Commissioners, and it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Channel 52 for the significant contributions it has made and the exemplary services devoted to the county of Passaic and its community. Be it further proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners wishes Channel 52 and all its leaders, staff, and viewers continued happiness and success. That was a mouthful. Please step right up.
Thank you so much for this honor, and we are really very much honored. Actually, we started Channel 52 in 2014, and we started very little. Then we are gradually growing bigger. And during the pandemic, we tried to stay, I mean, we tried to inform people and stay connected with the people and with the communities. I believe we did so far we could reach, and it was all possible because of all our teammates with us, Mr. Farukazum, Amber. There were some other journalists from Bangladesh. I must mention Mr. Mithun Mustafiz, Mr. Kamran Karim, and there was Sharmina Shiraj, our another anchor. We really did hard job 24 by 7 because we had to be in front of the screen all the time. So I know how hard work they did. I must recognize their hard work, too. And thank you, everyone, for recognizing us. Thank you, John, for remembering us especially and supporting us. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'd say you were. Yes.
Good evening, everyone. This is a big moment for us. You know, many channels does different things, but getting recognized actually, you know, bring such a, you know, emotional turmoil between people. People can do many things in world, but unless you don't get recognized, especially from the county office, that really makes you feel like that, you know, we did something. And then it pushes people to do more better. And we touched internationally many different countries. So my hope is because we did touch mental health, domestic violence, difficult subjects, our next generation, you know, we are opening the doors for them. So I'm really touched. This is a touching moment for me personally, for my team. They worked menless, you know, amount, senses, many different things we have touched, but getting recognized is big. So thank you so much.
Yes, I, there's so many guests, you know, Dr. Lillissamins, Dr. Kyari, who always helped me in the back, everyone who was there, which we will give the names, it's going to be a long list, but from the bottom of my heart, thanks to everyone for recognizing, because recognition is the main thing in life. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you, County Commissioners, everybody recognizing us as a Channel 52. Channel 52, we started 2016, various things, we've been doing it, but you know, especially 2022, when the COVID-19 is coming in, we are involved in very much deeper about our, you know, community awareness. First of all, the COVID-19, all the, you know, emergency stuff like gloves, all the things we are being providing. And we are, whatever we try, we reach out our community and awareness. And second thing, you know, we did, the Census Bureau, through you, you did a good job through our community to involve the awareness for the, you know, Census Bureau, which is a lot of people, they don't care, they don't want to fill up the form, you know? So we had to push up a little bit. So this come out good number. And third of all, we are touching our Bengali community, not only that, because culturally we are, we are very much involved, our job and our daily life, but for the lesser time, we try to reach and we try to involve our cultural event, so many things we are trying to reach. And we are providing a lot of informative things that they can get advantage on. So those things we are coming up for the mainstream so that we can learn also, we can get through those informative information to them, and they can get advantage on it. And we hope we are, next time, we are spread our vision as a transparency, as a media, and we will, we will provide whatever we can, you know, expect and our best effort to give our community and abroad you too. Thank you very much being here, and we are very appreciative for your.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the greatest country in the world, where you come from anywhere and you can make and keep your footing here. And this texture has been disrupted, as mentioned, by hatred and the racial injustice, but as Martin Luther King said, "We shall overcome." And now this Channel 52 is the spokesperson, is the mirror of the community. During this pandemic time, I myself hosted program with the doctors and making people alert of the coronavirus, and I brought psychologists, psychiatrists, pulmonologists, and infectious disease specialists. So we tried to make the community aware and how to be safe and how to live in unity with the rest of the community. Thank you very much for recognizing Channel 52.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Do you like the photo?
Yeah.
Come on. You're not finished yet. Wait, everybody's going to come down.
Yeah, Anam, come here.
So as you gathered from the first presentation, but I didn't officially mention at the beginning, we have a theme this year, and it's actually a theme that's been carrying through Black History Month in February, Women's History Month in March, and so on and so forth, which is to recognize people and organizations that really stepped up and made a tangible difference in their communities during the COVID-19 pandemic over these last two years. And I have the privilege of reading this next one. Kamala, would you join? So if you all are watching the slideshow, then every so often you're getting to see the Vice President of the United States, the first Indian-American, first Asian-American Vice President of the United States, Kamala Harris. She is my second favorite Kamala. For the record, no offense to her, but my absolute favorite Kamala is standing right here next to me. So I'm going to read this on behalf of my colleagues. I'm going to skip the part about the month because you already heard that. But whereas Kamala Anupendi was born and raised in Hyderabad, India, and immigrated to the United States in 1989 at the age of 22, with $400 in her pocket to pursue higher education. And whereas Kamala Anupendi has worked in the retail software industry for 25 years and is currently a sales consultant at Zebra Technologies. And whereas in 2019, Kamala became a court-appointed special advocate, CASA, for Passaic County CASA, to work with children of Passaic County who have been removed from their homes due to abuse or neglect. And whereas in 2018, Kamala founded the Wayne Volunteers, a grassroots organization performing SEWA, or service, in Wayne with the aim of inspiring children to embrace community service and volunteerism, and led the organization from its beginning with about 25 members to its current membership of more than 1,500 residents of the Wayne area. And whereas Kamala Anupendi and her network of Wayne volunteers have provided thousands of meals for children for Oasis for women and children, and hand-make hundreds of sandwiches for the homeless every month, which they donate to Ava's Kitchen. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic in 2020 and 2021, she coordinated dozens of efforts to help feed the hungry, help senior citizens with companionship and local families struggling with life necessities, and with her family made and donated more than 500 cloth masks. And whereas, under Kamala's leadership throughout the COVID-19 pandemic, Wayne volunteers donated hot meals twice a week to Oasis, created a meal train of home-cooked meals, organized and delivered daily donations of leftover food for more than a dozen local bakeries and restaurants, organizations serving the homeless and hungry, and also raised funds to donate fresh produce boxes and prepared food for seniors to father English pantry and set up weekly calls to seniors to uplift their spirits during the pandemic. And whereas Kamala resides in Wayne with her husband Avik and daughter Shivani, who are both here. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the, by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds Kamala Anupendi for the significant contributions she has made and the exemplary service and leadership she has unselfishly devoted to the county of Passaic and to the community. And be it further proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners wishes Kamala Anupendi, her family, and all the Wayne volunteers continued happiness and success.
John didn't tell me I have to speak. My life has been based on SEWA. Those of you who grew up in the Indian subcontinent know that SEWA means service. And we, our entire family was based on service for anybody. So my first introduction was when I was a very young child, monthly food donations to the beggars. My mom used to cook, and we had to serve. We used to have a line of 100 people standing outside our home, and we had to donate it. And that continued as, with $400 in one-way ticket when I came here, that never stopped me from SEWA. Throughout my grad school, my very first job, I continued helping people in whichever way I can. In school, I was a victim counselor for rape victims and then counselor for domestic violence victims. But when Shivani came along, as anybody who lives in Wayne, we all live a privileged life. There's very little opportunity for a true SEWA. You know, we raise funds for school by hopping around 100 times to help some organizations, but it's not the true SEWA that we were used to. So when, when she was growing up without this concept, we had, I had to do something. So I got our Indian community together, the few of us that were there. It was, it started with 20 families, and we said, we're going to actually make the children make the sandwiches and make snack packs. Because I asked Oasis, what do you want? They told us that they feed their children whom they support on a weekly basis, but when they go on weekends, they have no, there's no guarantee that they will get food. Can you imagine children going home on weekends and not having any food? So we decided to make a two-gallon snack pack of easy-to-cook food for the kids, mac and cheese, cereal cups with shelf-stable milk, granulobars. So every kid was given a weekend snack pack, and we used to do that twice a month. And the kids, as young as three years old, were putting together those snack packs, whereas the older ones were actually making sandwiches, fresh sandwiches with, you know, meat and cheese and all the good ingredients to donate to Eva's Kitchen. So that's how Wayne Volunteers started, but during COVID-19, when people started asking, what can we do, what can we do? We opened it up to beyond Indian community, and it went from having 20 families to now actually 1,700-plus members. And anytime we need help, we just put out a call, and people just open up their wallets and hearts, and they just come together. So I'm, that's one of my proudest achievements, not of anything else I have done. It's to, it's to, you know, awaken our community, not just for people, people in Patterson, but even within Wayne, there's so many families that need help, and we've been able to reach a fraction of that. And we hope that, you know, with this kind of recognition, I'm going to, you know, blast it in the community, obviously, and say, look, people know us, so we can do more. So I'm truly, I'm humbled and honored, and it couldn't have come at a better time. And so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Where you think you're going?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Picture?
Here.
Slide over here a little bit. I'll make some room over here. You got it?
Yeah.
Let me get next to the shortest guy here.
Don't you like it? Hey, can you hear a little guy?
One more, one more, two more. Now therefore be it proclaimed when we get to eat. Which reminds me to invite everyone downstairs. The good people of Jyoti Indian Cuisine of Wayne have provided us with samosas and gulab jamun and papri chat. I get to pick the menu, and I'm kind of biased towards the Gujarati food personally. So, but do everyone stick around, go on downstairs, enjoy some, some great Indian food and some fellowship among everyone when the program concludes and we move on with our meeting. So it's my privilege to read this as well on behalf of all my colleagues, but I want to invite up the respiratory therapists of St. Joseph's Health. I want to invite up Ken Morris, who's here on behalf of St. Joseph's Health. Come on up, we've got matching uniforms, except for Ken. So it may, come on, come on. So it may seem unusual in an ethnic heritage month to recognize a group of professionals, and we're by all means recognizing all 44 of the respiratory therapists at St. Joseph's Health, but it happens that this is a group of healthcare professionals, most of whom trace their lineage to Asian American backgrounds, Korean American, Filipino American, Indian American, and others. And also, as we think about COVID-19, it's a group of people that we tend to rattle off, if you will, with no disrespect to any particular profession, the doctors, the nurses, off, if you will, with no disrespect to any particular profession, the doctors, the nurses, the EMTs. The respiratory therapists, as you're going to hear, have a particularly compelling story when you think about these last two years and dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. So given the connection to the Asian-Pacific American community and the remarkable service that you all have done, this was a really easy choice for us. So on behalf of the entire board, whereas respiratory therapists, well, let me start from the beginning. Whereas the month of May has been designated as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in recognition of the outstanding achievements and contributions made to the United States by immigrants from Asia and the Pacific Islands and their descendants. And the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic deems it fitting and appropriate at this time to honor and recognize the staff of the Respiratory Therapy and Pulmonary Department of St. Joseph's Health in Patterson, Totowa, and Wayne. And whereas respiratory therapists are specialized healthcare practitioners responsible for all aspects of pulmonary care, which includes maintaining all patients on invasive and non-invasive ventilators, drawing, analyzing, and monitoring patients' arterial blood gases, administering medications, and consulting with the nursing and medical team on the recommended course of therapy for each patient. And whereas many of the respiratory therapists at St. Joseph's Health are of Asian and Pacific Islander descent, including immigrants and second-generation individuals from India, the Philippines, Korea, and Japan. And whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the work of respiratory therapists has been especially important to saving lives and improving outcomes of Passaic County residents who were hospitalized due to infection with the novel coronavirus SARS-CoV-2, an acronym that literally stands for Severe Acute Respiratory Syndrome. And whereas respiratory therapists work, bring them into high-risk, close-contact situations with individuals most seriously affected by the COVID virus. And they are, along with their colleagues in nursing and other specialties, among the true healthcare heroes of the pandemic. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds the respiratory therapists of St. Joseph's Health for the significant and lifesaving contributions they have made and the exemplary service they have devoted to patients and families in the County of Passaic during the COVID-19 pandemic. And be it further proclaimed that this Board of County Commissioners wishes the staff of the Respiratory Therapy Pulmonary Department of St. Joseph's Health in Patterson, Totowa, and Wayne continued health, happiness, and success. Ken, do you want to say hello?
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of Kevin Slaven, President and CEO of St. Joseph's Health, and Jennifer Mandzisiewicz, Chief Operating Officer, we'd like to thank you for this recognition. And as Commissioner Bartlet had said, many folks, when they think about frontline, you know, healthcare providers, don't typically think about respiratory therapists. But they are truly men and women who are on the front line, particularly during this current pandemic. They help to save lives. They help to save the lives of folks you may know, your loved ones, and many of folks you may not know. We are truly appreciative of the work that they do every day on behalf of the patients that they care for, and they are true healthcare heroes. Thank you again.
Oh my, I am just so thoroughly, thank you so much, so honored, so honored. Special thanks to Passaic County Commissions, Ken Morris, and John. I, I don't have words. I am speechless. And thank you so much for honoring us, recognizing us, and I'm so glad that people get to know that how critical role, vital role that we had played during those two years. It was... I am just being so, I'm just getting so emotional. It was very, very, very difficult. So I am so happy, so honored for recognizing us. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jensen. I'm employed in St. Joseph's. For the past 15 years, I worked as a respiratory. And as Viva said, it's really an honor to be here today. And thank you, I really, we really appreciate as a core group for giving us this recognition. And I don't know if it's the right way to say it, but COVID really made us recognized by other people before. When I asked, when I told people what I do, I told them, I'm respiratory, and they're like, what do you guys do? Now all I had to do is just tell them I'm respiratory, like, oh yeah, we know. Like, either way, somehow they are connected to somewhere. So I really appreciate it. And, and at this time, I also thank God for keeping us all safe. We did, as a hospital, we did lose some people to COVID, but most of us, God kept us safe. And again, thank you, everybody, for this opportunity.
I, I would like to thank the Passaic County Board of Commissioners for the recognition of the St. Joseph's Hospital. Yeah, COVID was hard on everybody in the hospital, but yeah, we made it through, so thank you for that, and thank you for the recognition.
Before we break, let's bring everybody back up channel 52 and Kamala.
Yeah, Ken Morris. Ken, one picture.
Boring, so go downstairs, enjoy some food, and we'll join you when we finish our business meeting.
All right, if we are, we're going to continue on with the regular meeting, I'm going to go back to our county administrator and administrator's agenda. Please feel free to go downstairs and partake of whatever food you like. It's all right. Go ahead, Anthony.
Director, we also have a very quick public hearing that we need to take care of. It's a public hearing regarding a potential relocation of the 2018, reallocation, I'm sorry, of the 2018 Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Award to the township of Little Falls. So I'll ask if the clerk could read the public notice.
This hearing, this hearing is regarding the potential reallocation of the Township of Little Falls 2018 Lewis Park Improvements Grant Award in the amount of $200,000 from the Passaic County Open Space Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund to the Duva, to the Duva Field Improvement Project in order to leverage this funding to coincide with the 2019 round of grant funding for the same project pursuant to NJSA 40:12-15, 15.3B. The following public hearing was advertised in The Herald and The Record on April 15, 2022, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing. County Commissioners Bartlet.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Gallo.
Here.
Lapour.
Here.
Deputy Director Lazara. Director James.
Here. Is anybody present desire to be heard on these recommendations? I'm sorry, I need a motion to open this.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, does anybody, anybody present desire to be heard on the recommendations and only on the recommendations that are in this hearing? Anyone?
Seeing no one at the podium, I moved to close the public portion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll.
All, all in favor?
Aye. Quickest public meeting. I got a motion to close the public hearing.
Down motion.
Second. Roll.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get to adjourn, or was that adjournment?
Yeah, that concludes my, my report, Director. Other than to, I'd just like to publicly announce, the business administrator in the borough of Pumpton Lakes is retiring after a very long career throughout Passaic County. He was in West Milford, he was in Wanacue, and finished his career in Pumpton Lakes. So he's retiring at the end of the year, Kevin Boyle, and I just want to publicly thank him for his professionalism over my career, working with him very closely, and wish him all the best in his retirement.
Yeah, send that out, roll over, it's Anthony, because he really was very easy to work with, really good guy.
Thank you.
And thank you, and thank you for the report. Could I have a motion for approval of the minutes from our last meeting?
Down motion.
Second.
Roll. County Commissioners.
County Commissioners Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Have a motion to approve proclamations.
So moved. Second.
You got that, Lou?
Best and Lapour.
All?
I guess we can do them all in favor.
All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Okay, so we've done the administrator's report, we're at county commissioner reports. I said what I had to say for today. Commissioner, Deputy Director Lazara? Commissioner Bartlet?
I'm good, I want to get downstairs for the food.
Okay. Commissioner Best?
Yeah, just really quick, just want to send our prayers out to all the families in Texas from the school shooting that took place. 14 young lives were lost, as well as a teacher. As an educator, several educators up here, you know, this really hits close to home. So, you know, all the parents, make sure you hug your kids tight tonight, say a prayer for them, and also say a prayer for your, your teachers and everyone who works in the school building. It's sad that we have to worry about more than just whether or not our kids are learning in school. We have to worry about if we send them on the bus, if they're going to come home alive. And this is a world we live in, it's unfortunate, with all the beautiful things going on. This is one of the sad realities that we have to face. So again, I speak, I think, for all of my colleagues when I say our, our hearts and prayers go out to all of those families and anyone who was affected by mass shootings in this country. Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Duffy?
Well said, too. I have a couple of things to report. One is Memorial Day Ceremony this Thursday, May 26, 12 noon, at the William J. Bates Memorial Courthouse Plaza. Passaic-Vinnyvisinage Superior Court and us, the county commissioners, are hosting this. So if you can attend, it's, it's a very nice little ceremony. Also this morning, I met with Greenwood Lake Commission at Browns Point in West Milford. We had Senator Buco over there, over there with us, Assemblywoman Dunn, Mayor Dale, DEP, many state and local stakeholders. What the reason for being is, they're going to, the state's going to pour more money into Greenwood Lake, and rightfully so. And they're going to, they've started a site plan for a boat ramp, public boat ramp. Should be exciting. So it was a great morning. Kudos to Senator Buco for pushing this along, bipartisan sponsorship, and it'd be great for West Milford and surrounding areas. That's it. Thank you.
Commissioner Gallo?
I have nothing to report.
Commissioner Lapour?
Thank you, Director. I have 29 resolutions, I should say the Finance Committee has 29 resolutions for consideration by my colleagues. I'd like to point out Resolution Number 17, which talks about an extension of the contract with Karizen Health for a one-year extension, which will result in a $2 million savings for the taxpayers. I want to thank administration for working and putting that all together in conjunction with Bergen County. Also, I had the opportunity, a joyous and a sad occasion today. First, I had the opportunity to go with the Sheriff's Department down behind Kennedy High School. The Sheriff Scuba Team went in, at request of the family, to try to locate someone that they believe may have gone into the Passaic River down by pedestrian walkway. So I, they went into some pretty difficult situations there. I mean, you can't see the water, but they used sonar, and it was a car down there that picked up an interference signal, so they went in. So I haven't heard anything, whether they were successful locating, but the family was very appreciative to the Sheriff's Department and Sheriff Bergen for providing the Scuba Team to try to ease some of the pain that this family is feeling. And then I also had the opportunity to visit school number two, where the principal there, Lisa Van Lu, who looked like she was like 40, and she had a 52-year career as, as a principal there. And I got to tell you, I've never seen such an enthusiastic auditorium full of children just screaming and yelling her name every time she came up. So she's retiring, and I want to just say that I wish her, on behalf of the board, all the best of luck and health and happiness for well-deserved retire. and health and happiness for well-deserved retirement. And, and then finally, piggyback on what Commissioner Duffy mentioned earlier about, we had a medal ceremony at the old courthouse the other day. The entire judiciary was there to help give out the medals. It was quite a moving experience. It was, it was hours, about almost 30 medals given out, correct? And again, the, you have to see the look on these folks' faces when they, when they're called out and recognized for the sacrifices that they made in various wars. So kudos to them, kudos to Sandy and Lou. You spearheaded that effort, and I want to thank you very much. Congratulate you on a, on a job well done. And that's all I have.
Okay, we have no communications. Can I have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting, please?
I'll move it.
Second.
I, Commissioner Lazare, seconded by Commissioner Best.
Roll. All, all in favor, say aye.
When it comes to stuff like this, actually.
Okay, I will, I will do it.
For now, that's fine. All right, if anybody present would like to address this board, please step up to the podium.
Seeing no one at the podium.
No.
No, there's gentlemen.
Say your name and address, say your name and address, and you'll have.
Hurry up.
Can I please get through this? Say your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to address the board.
Walls, I believe tonight you're voting on a issue for put a bridge across the Peckman River for the Morris Canal. And I'd like to tell you, I live right where that bridge is supposed to go, and it's not designed properly. The water comes, the 100-year flood bridge, it's a, it's one foot above the 100-year flood mark. We have some pictures of the, of what the bridge is supposed to look like, and trees go down that river, trees this big with branches and everything. It will take the bridge out, or it'll clog the bridge. The river's a mess currently from the last two floods. Your Main Street Bridge, Little Falls, is still being undermined. It's not fixed yet from the last two floods. I can't see putting another bridge across that river. We can't fix the bridges we already have. The trestle, railroad trestle in Cedar Grove was undermined the last flood. They had emergency repairs done for it. They thought that bridge was gonna come down because of the waters. Waters rise, right now, Peckman River, I've been, I lived down there for the past 32 years. When I first built my house, I personally built my house with my own two hands, my sister lived across the street from me. We could pretty much walk down the bank, nice, easy bank, about four feet, up four feet, and I'd be on her side, the water trickling through. Water still trickles through now, but it's about 11-foot drop, an 11-foot drop back up, to get back up to the other side. That's how much it eroded in 30 years. Appears where these, where this walkway bridge is gonna go, it's gonna erode. My sister put two walls in, it cost about $140,000. The two walls disappeared, one, one in each flood. Disaster. River can't handle, the water, the water's just a massive flow. You go there today, it's peaceful, nice. It's all runoff, bloodwater's coming down off the, both sides of the mountain, and it rises like that, and it goes away like that. But it rises up 11, 12 feet in a matter of minutes. All right, maybe an hour, you know? But cannot handle the breach. That's all I have to say, thank you very much, I'll compliment you. I lived in town, lived in Passaic County my whole life. I played golf on the golf course since I was 12. Golf, golf course is fantastic, right? When I was a kid, it sucked. Now, it's a pleasure, a pleasure to play that course. Thank you very much.
At the podium, I move the clothes, huh? I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Robert Doge. I live at 168 Wilmar Road, and I am Mark's neighbor. So I want to respectfully request the board seriously reconsider moving forward this project, the Peckman Footbridge Project. Going back in time to Hurricane Ida, I was in my backyard, we live a little bit along the river. And during Hurricane Ida, within a matter of a half hour, the creek turned into a nice, peaceful creek to literally look like the Colorado Rapids, where if you had fallen in the river, you had been dead. Instantly, the water would have just washed you away, you would have been dead. Had that bridge been built, the bridge would have been completely destroyed. There would have been nothing left. The property in which the abutment is supposed to be constructed is gone. There's nothing left. So the, the problem is, you know, when the flood happened, the Colorado River had these massive trees flowing down them. They were full grown sycamore trees, 100 feet in length or a foot in diameter. So I have some pictures of what the bridge would have to contend with, because upstream, about 200 yards, the Main Street Bridge got totally chockered block with trees, several massive trees. So if I could maybe pass some pictures around to see what the footbridge would have to contend with. So those are some pictures of what this footbridge would have to contend, contend with. Again, our neighbor, the, the water was so massive and so fierce, our neighbor had a garage that was totally destroyed. Not only was the garage destroyed, but the foundation and the land in which the garage was constructed is completely gone. There's nothing left. And this property, again, is adjacent to where the bridge would be constructed. So I have some, some more pictures of this. Right. Let's give you all the pictures. The last set of pictures I, I have is of my property. I saw, I drew some, some dimensions of how much erosion there was. In the last page, I showed a picture of where the bridge would sit. Again, the land in which the bridge foundation would have been constructed, had it been constructed already, is completely gone. There's nothing, there's nothing left. To be viable, the bridge would probably have to be constructed at a height higher by at least 15 feet of which was proposed. And at that height, feasibility, it no longer becomes feasible, because we're slated to be $500,000 project now. Now it's slated, it'd probably be more in the magnitude of about $1 million. So I guess I would just request that, you know, respectfully reconsider the allocation of funds for this project. I seriously think there's some, probably some better projects that, that could be utilized for this amount of money. That's all I want to say, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one at the podium, I move the closed public. Oh, jeez, I'm sorry. We gotta move these flags here.
Hello, how you doing? My name is F. Karimad. I'm Robert and Mark's neighbor. I've lived in 95 Cedar Grove Road for 22 years. I'm an HVAC technician, but I'm not an engineer, I'm not a professional. And I really don't know much about bridges, but I do have common sense, where when I moved in there, the water, like Mark said, was about three feet across. You could actually spit to the other side and jump to the other side. Now, it's about 15 feet across. I know it very well, because me and my daughter walk it. She calls it the adventure trail. It's beautiful, it's natural, it looks great, and it's safe. The land is preserved. It can't be built, anything can be, it's a wildlife reserve. Now, if you're reserving that, doesn't it make sense putting a bridge next to that? It's gonna be littering, foot traffic, and it cuts right through our backyard, which my porch and my kids are there, and Rob's kids and Mark's kids are always there. That street that we live on is not a flood zone, but recently it became a flood zone. And the reason it became a flood zone is because there's three bridges, and underneath those bridges is very small. And that's what's causing the water to back up and the land to go away. Why build a fourth one? It's just gonna add to the problem. There's a lot more that we could do in Little Falls than that bridge. We've lived without it, we could live without it. Thank you.
Seeing one, seeing nobody at the podium, I move the closed public portion for the third time.
Second.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes.
Director, if I may, gentlemen, if I could have our engineering department come out and we could have conversations with you. The action on tonight's agenda is not award for the construction of the bridge, it's for a consultant to inspect when construction begins. So we're not taking action on the, on, we just took the bits. So Jonathan, if you could have somebody from your office reach out, Lou has your information, and we'll set up a time to come out and further discuss your concerns, okay? And thank you for the compliment on the golf course. I know, well, our assistant, Mark's director, Greg Moore, is here, and they take great pride in that golf course. And I think it's probably one of the best public courses for the amount of play in, in the area.
You know you got a word for words to say what was said, so.
And now, next year, we could raise the greens fees. Yeah. Listen, we hear your concerns, you know, and, and, you know, I'm sure you, I'm sure you wouldn't take your time tonight if you didn't have serious concern. So we'll take it equally as serious and, you know, come out there and take a look at it. And you have the design plans with you, Jonathan, you know, to go over, okay?
Director, if I may, maybe I'll join that group when they go out?
Director, we just have one amendment to Agenda Item Number 3222-574, the resolution authorizing the purchase of food and beverage items from U.S. Foods pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-15. Just a slight change in the text of the resolution. But there is one settlement of litigation on tonight's agenda. If any commissioners want to discuss same in executive session, certainly do that.
I'd like to vote separate on L9. Yes. Usually. All right, so we will be voting separately on Number 9, Consent Agenda, and I need somebody to move the amendment to Number 32, as read by our attorney.
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Or in Bartlett, on the amendment, roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, because I always kind of screw this up. All right, so I need to move on the Consent Agenda, Item 1 through 8, and then 10 through 97.
I'll move it. Second.
Roll.
Seconded by Best, right?
Yes.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, can I have a motion on Number 9?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Abstain.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. We received a supplemental debt statement from our CFO, and for Number 2, we have a guarantee ordinance, Number 2204, a resolution authorizing the guarantee by the County of Passaic, New Jersey, of payment of principal and interest on the governmental lease revenue bond Series 22 Passaic County, the City of Patterson Board of Education project, and the Passaic County Improvement Authority in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $9,500,000. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
Not today. There'll be a public hearing.
So there will be a hearing on this. Motion to approve Guarantee Ordinance 2204 on first reading.
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Abstain.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Abstain.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, can I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
I'll move it. Second.
Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, can I have a motion to move the bills list?
I'll move it. Second.
Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director, Deputy Director Lazare. Director James.
Yes. Well, thank you, and can I have a motion to it?
I'll make that motion.
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapour.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazare.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, thank you all for coming and staying, and. Hi, Kelly, we'll, we'll torture you all in a, in a separate meeting on some other night.